Meeting, the regular meeting of January 4th to order. First order is we have a quorum, but we could appoint alternates if someone were to appear. We don't see, I don't see any of our alternates yet. So we'll proceed with four. The approval of the minutes, I'd like to defer that because I think they needed a little work. They got done late today and I think there's, there's a few constructions and things that are not the way we'd like to see them. And so let's go on from that. Any other comments from anybody else, Bruce?
Well, I had a couple of little things, but if you're redoing the further work on the minutes.
Yeah, I think we can fix them and consider them next time. We'll pick up those things.
Okay.
The next order of our business is to continue the public hearing of the Simsbury Land Trust. And I see we have Marjorie with us tonight.
Evening.
Head of the land trust. And do you have any comments, Marjorie? We got a report from the town engineer. And I think Mike and I both have some comments about that. Perhaps you should tell us and then we can discuss.
Okay, yes, I did get the engineer's report on December 31st. So we really haven't had a chance to do anything about it. You know, we will be contacting Aquarium as far as the pipe that's near the entrance or alongside the road. We'll talk to Tom Roy, who's the tree warden about the trees that I think there are about two small cedar trees that need to be removed. The gravel depth, I would think would be standard. I would imagine it's about 12 feet, maybe three courses. I know it's not specified on the, on the plan, but I think it would be standard for that. The engineer had recommended a drainage system. The, where the parking lot is, is in the, is uphill from where a lot of the water problems are, which we're trying to address and got a lot of drainage coming through because we were never granted the permission to put the parking lot in originally from the historical district. That has now been granted. So what we're expecting is that the drainage will flow towards the lower area where the, the entrance is now. We're expecting, I think on the plan, there is a berm that goes across what is now the existing entrance into the parking lot. And the idea is that we will fluff up the compacted soil and replant. And the concept is that the, the new plants, the new plantings and the berm will prevent any of the water from getting onto, sort of act sort of as a first wild rain garden in that area. So we're expecting the drainage system issues to be better because it will not be compacted soil. It is now from the parking, from the cars going in and out and because of the berm that we were putting in. And again, it's going to be a planted berm. As far as the sight lines, I think the road curves a little bit, so that's in our favor. We won't be putting any of the plantings right up against the, the edge. We'll be putting them in a bit, so that will help with the sight lines. And mostly shrubs along that line. And that was a request to hide the parking lot. But the shrubs will continue along the line where the berm is to stabilize.
I'd go out and come back in again at this point.
So that's as far, that's as far as goes. As far as getting stamped drawings, we will contact, by Lona McBroom originally did the plans. We will see if we can get the stamped, someone in the Simsbury Land Trust has them, I'm sure. But where they are at this point, I'm not sure. But we will see if we can get my Lona McBroom to do the stamped drawings. You know, it's a simple gravel parking lot, so we'll see what, what we can do. But that's as far as we've been able to get from, you know, the engineering report on the 31st.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have comments about the situation?
Well, so there is some site work there, right? Because right now is not nearly as level as where you, where the current parking lot is.
Well, it, you know, it's, it's an interesting site. It slopes away from Lucy Brook down to the parking lot, the current parking lot entrance. You know, they will have to do some excavation to, so that they can put in the gravel. There will be some, some slight excavation to get the apron, you know, into the parking lot. But any of the materials that are excavated, you know, the, the topsoil that they will have to remove can be spread in the, in the remainder part of the, the lower part of the existing parking lot, which we want to close off.
Okay.
What you're saying is you'll dig down about six inches.
Excuse me, can I call Hulse here and let's appoint the two alternates that have arrived? Shannon, you can replace Mike Doyle and Melissa, you can serve for Donna Pinestein. Okay, we're in the middle of a public hearing, continued from our last meeting. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Kevin.
Yeah, okay, so you're, you're taking out about six inches worth of topsoil. That's good, you know, you're going to put the gravel inside that area. Okay, and then I don't know how many trees we're removing here.
I think, I think there are two trees along the, at the new entrance. And they're cedar trees.
At the entrance, so you need to remove them in order to do the entrance. And then, you know, I am having a hard time looking at the, the drawing and I drove by, I mean, I live on Terry's plane, so I don't live very far from there. But where, where is this in relation to the brook?
It's to the south.
It's still south of the brook?
It's south of the brook. The brook, the brook is interesting because it does cut down. It's a very, it's a deep cut into the brook. And we're on the upper side of it and it slopes away. It goes up to, you know, the brook and it goes up and then it slopes away from that, from the brook. So it's not sloping into the brook.
So the bridge is over the brook? So this is to the?
The bridge is over the brook.
Okay, so it's to the south still of the?
Still the south.
Okay, all right, I was thinking that was further north than that when I drove by. I was, I was having a hard time picturing exactly where this was going in. Okay, did we get any feedback from the neighbors? We had one neighbor, right?
We got the, the email that was read last time.
All right.
I don't know that we got any more, Mike.
No, sorry, you didn't receive additional, you just have the one correspondence from Katie McQuaddie that we read into the record at the last meeting.
Is the, is the sign up on the site? The zoning sign, I didn't see it.
So, so the governor actually through the, the executive order nine, I don't remember which one, waves public informational signs as posting of public hearings. So it should, it, it may have been up at this point and obviously it's snowstorms, et cetera. It may have came down, but it's not required under the current executive order.
All right, but we did send out a notice to the neighbors?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're, they're, these neighbors are aware because these, these neighbors were, attended the historic district commission procedure when they went through their certificate of appropriateness and it was discussed, you know, some of their concerns about drainage told them, when it comes to this commission, you need to attend those meetings and they've been watching and have contacted my office. Like the McQuaddies, for example, have emailed me in the past prior to the application that we've received.
Yeah, because the new house did quite a bit of underground drainage for their yard. And that, and I thought that's why the engineer was suggesting the same thing here.
Yeah, and that was, that was a lot because the fact that the soils of that particular lot, other than a, a small pocket of sandy soils where the septic systems proposed, were very silty and we experienced seasonal high groundwater and other sort of drainage that kind of limited their capabilities. So that's why they had to do so many elaborate drainage. And also some of that elaborate drainage work was associated with the subdivision approval for the Ellsworth subdivision. That was actually supposed to be three lots out front. There's only two now, but they had to basically make it so that there was zero runoff leaving the site.
Okay, so their soil is different than this site.
You're, you're getting into the flood plain, you're getting a little more into the sandy, sand and gravel associated with the flood plain now. So you have, you have some areas that you may have the ability to have drainage. But Jeff's concern with the underdrain was really in those frozen ground conditions or when the water table's high, that underdrain would act as a belt and suspenders to protect the parking lot.
Okay, did conservation have to see this application?
This received a wetlands permit from the Conservation Commission.
It did, okay.
So you're, you're the last stop on their train to construction.
Okay, as long as they got approval from the other two, that's good to know that we don't have to worry about it.
Comments from Bruce, Ann?
I, I would just say I did drive by it over the weekend and the existing parking lot was just, I mean, you couldn't even walk in it, it was so muddy. I had boots and I opted not to try it or to drive my car in there. And at the same time, there were plenty of cars parked all along the road. So I would think an improved parking lot is, is really critical to that area, to that site.
And if I might add, that's why we want to do this project.
Well, yeah, I just had a couple of things real quick. One of them is, I wondered if we could get some clarification now though, that there's been more attention to the map. The McQuaddies that sent the email, is that their driveway opposite the south border of this drawing? The drawing stops at a certain point and across the street, the west side, there's apparently a driveway. I'm assuming that's a?
Those are the houses.
Is that McQuaddie's house?
Yeah. Do you know, Marjorie, is their house or our houses?
Their driveway is somewhat offset, but one of the problems with the parking lot as it is now, because we couldn't, we couldn't put in an improved parking lot as we originally planned. It, the drainage from the low part of the parking lot drains right across the street. Not necessarily, well, a little bit into their driveway, also into their, into their yard. And that is the reason why we, the parking lot has been moved further up. And we do want to put that berm in so that the water does not flow into their property.
So I'm just going to share right now with the commission, the current G I S, maybe this helps. The, the driveway here, the lollipop, that is the McQuaddies. And just, just to the north, between the two shadows along the right-hand side of East Wheaton Street, that's the existing curb cut that Marjorie is talking about. And you can kind of see the ruts that are in the field right now from people using the kind of unimproved area, impromptu parking. You'd actually see they're tracking sediment in the road. They're moving closer to the, the green trees that are kind of towards the, the northern corner of, I don't know if you could see my cursor on it. It's, it's closer to Lucy Brook. Lucy Brook is kind of running, it's, it's actually off of the McQuaddies properties, on the houses property, towards the northern corner of their, their parcel. Does this, does this help with the map?
Yeah, it is good. Right, yeah, because you can see Lucy Brook on the west side of the road, but you can't, oh, maybe you can kind of tell where it is on the east side.
Yeah, with, with the tree cover on the east side, it's, it's kind of, oops, I'm sorry. It's, it's tough to see because it kind of snakes its way and that's where it's a really kind of a defined channel over there.
Okay, yeah, now we can see your cursor, I couldn't see it before. So our houses is still further north then?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and for the, for the applicant, the reference to some no parking signs on East Wheaton Street, was that to be your responsibility to put some signs on the street that say no parking?
We asked, we asked the police to put no parking spots on. We really don't have any jurisdiction about the parking on the streets. But we have been posting no parking on our parking lot during the times when the, the ground is muddy. When it's frozen, we've been allowing the parking and we have a steward who's been going and trying to put hay bales across the parking lot when it's, when the conditions are not right. You know, it's, it's been, it's been a perennial problem for us. We are federally mandated to have parking or access to the trails on this property. So, you know, we're really looking to fix it. We want to put a berm across the existing parking, parking lot entrance so that water will not drop. Because that's the low part of the, of the lot. We don't want that water going across into the new vision.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone, anyone else have comments?
I was looking for the, what folder is, is the engineer's reported?
I think it wasn't, was it in a folder? Might have been on the top.
I'm looking right now. Unless she put it under correspondence.
No.
Or is it just in the big folder?
It should, it should be in the folder for the application then.
Well, I didn't see it there.
I didn't see it there either.
I read it the other day, so I know it's in, in the Dropbox.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's application comments, it's right below the folder for 2014, 1231. I believe that's, that's the.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, apologize, yeah, it should be in the folder. That's what we, it was uploaded just, just to your Dropbox, but that's the Jeff's memo.
ZC 2014 PDF?
It just says 1231, 2020, application comments, final PDF. It's, it's just in the main folder.
Okay, I have it.
Yep.
All right, because there's, there's a couple of things he also said in there. One is, you know, our regs require a paved parking lot, but I don't think that we would want a paved parking lot on this property. So is that something that we can ignore, Mike?
I believe, and I gotta check, check which, which regs is one. I thought it was the commission has the ability to approve the surface treatment. Because we've ran into this in the past where individuals had gravel parking spaces and has been approved by the commission as an alternative option. And, but it also counted towards lot coverage. This is, this is a residential setting, so we don't have to worry about lot coverage. So I, I, I just don't have my, I'm apologizing, my regs are not in front of me, they're upstairs.
They're in the Dropbox.
So I believe you have discretion on the treatment, the surface of the, of the parking spaces.
In reading this, the engineer's report, I just had a question about the, the ADA parking spot, the handicap parking spot that we spoke of last week. And I'm, I might be missing it, but I thought that we had a discussion about maybe moving that parking space. And I'm not sure if that's what I'm reading in the engineer's report or if that is somewhere else.
That was part of the discussion at the last meeting.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't see anything about moving the location of the ADA parking. But the engineer's report asks about the slope.
Right.
I don't think that was the concern we had. We wanted to make sure that the spot itself was moved from where it was to the west. There was a block of three parking places. It looked like it would be a lot better if it were the first parking place on the west of that little block of three, closer to the road. And oriented north-south instead of east-west. So that when you backed out of there, you weren't backing into another parking place.
Right.
It's an interesting thing with the parking lot. We will pave that for the handicap parking spot. Unfortunately, the bridge across the street onto the trails is not ADA compliant, nor is, nor any of the trails.
I'm sorry, Marjorie, I couldn't understand what you said.
The, the, once you get past the parking lot, there will be no ADA compliant access to the trails, nor will the trails be ADA compliant.
But we're not, we're talking about just moving it within your parking lot.
Yeah, no, we will have that, no, that's, that's fine. You know, if you can, Mike will be able to share with me where, where this, the new location is. I know the historical society, the historical district group had a, had a preference for where they wanted it as well.
So just to clarify, so a person with a handicap placard can, can park there but still can't access the trails?
Yeah.
Well, they might be able to access the trails, but the trails aren't ADA compliant.
Well, there is a bridge to get over the?
That's not.
Right, depending upon your level of disability.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the reg says no area, where was it? I just lost it. All required parking spaces except for single-family residences must be located on paved surfaces.
And maybe Mike can find the language that gives us some latitude on that point.
Yeah, because we, we've, we've approved alternative treatment for parking spaces.
Do we need a variance application in front of us for that?
No, 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 we've approved it, we've approved it via special, special exception or with an application. I know we have in the past, we did it for Big Y and I'm trying to think of another example. So I know we have done that, I'm sorry.
Does that mean we did it correctly?
It doesn't mean.
Who's going to challenge us? Nobody. I mean, it's, it's the right way to treat that parking area.
I think the historical district wanted the gravel instead of paved as well.
Yeah, that was something that came up at H D C. They were, because their regs, the, the handbook for the district actually prohibits paved parking lots within the historic district.
Okay.
So that's why we settled with gravel and, and I just, I apologize.
My opinion is she loved it and approved it the way it is. With gravel.
And the other thing, you know, on the signs though, the no parking on the street, that's a scenic road. And they're supposed to, you know, limit signage and, and, you know, building it up. And, you know, I don't know if we could have some influence here, you know, do we really need the no parking signs? I know the neighbors wanted it.
But I guess they did.
Yeah, the neighbors definitely wanted it. There were concerns that there was a safety issue with people parking along that, that particular road. I know there were some comments at one of the hearings that parking along that portion of the road is very dangerous. But again, we, we are, we, you know, we, we don't put the signs along the road.
Yeah, that would be Tom Roy, that Public Works would do that.
I, I would just add that this weekend, when I did the drive-by, parking was all over the road. Some of it was vertical, some of it was horizontal. You would have to go into the other lane to, to get by the cars that will park there. It was, if somebody wasn't lucky, it could be dangerous.
And I know we, we put hay bales across the road to stop people from going in. And I think the public has moved the hay bales. You know, that's why we want to get, you know, the berm, we want to make the parking lot smaller. And, and of course, you know, during COVID, it's been worse than, you know, parking's been a problem more so than other years. Everyone's out on the trail. We've had extraordinary use of our trails during this, this year.
It's the only thing you can?
It's the only thing you can do.
So the purpose of the parking lot is to moderate the amount of on-street parking?
Well, it's, it's to prevent the erosion, the destruction of the parking lot that is now, to control the number of people. At some points, because the parking lot is a big open field, especially during COVID, we had some, you know, the neighbors said there were something, 27 cars. We don't really want that, we don't want that for the neighbors. It's hard to tell, tell the public what to do when they want to go out on the trails. And it's a nice trail, but we're trying to, you know, make a small parking lot so we're a good neighbor, prevent the erosion, have a site safe for the public and their cars. And, you know, fix all these problems that, that have not been able to be addressed because we haven't been able to get the permits for it.
And what are people going to do when the parking lot is full?
I'm hoping that the pandemic will be over and there will be lots of other things for people to do. It won't be quite so heavily used. You know, this winter is going to be a real challenge because people are using it. And, you know, it's, it's been really hard on the parking lot. We haven't had this level of problem at that parking lot before, but it's just been an extraordinary year.
Now, is there, are there borders on the parking lot, barriers?
There are big boulders.
Parking lot?
Yeah, all around the edge of the parking lot, we're putting boulders. And they won't be able to access, because of the berm, they won't be able to access the lower parts. So when the parking lot is full, the parking lot is full. But that's the case with, I mean, you can see, you know, Pennwood, it's all up and down 85. I mean, but that's a, that's a policing problem, you know. We want to provide a safe parking lot. People parking along the side of roads, you know, we, we don't have any control over them. That would be a sign.
Mike, what's your feeling about the, this engineer's report? Does it mean that we ought to send them back to edit it?
Yeah, I, I would prefer, some of the comments are related to drainage. You've, you've received complaints from the neighbors regarding drainage. I would, I would like to see that the, the plans are revised to incorporate some of Jeff's comments so that, you know, we don't, we're not approving something where we're inheriting a problem. And I think that because, you know, some of it either is the underdrain, the swale are pretty big changes that I don't think you should close the hearing and act on this application. I really would prefer that we have revised plans submitted to the commission.
What kind of cost issue is that? I mean, the land trust isn't paved with gold.
Right, I mean, well, that would be something that, that we, that we'd have to talk to. I mean, I defer to Marjorie on this. I know that Malona McBroom was providing them some service at a reduced rate. I don't want to get into finances, that's, that's their deal with Malona and McBroom.
We will talk, we will talk to Malona and see what they, they can do for us. Hopefully, I mean, they did the original plans. Hopefully they can do the revisions for us at a reasonable price. You know, we just want to get this done. And, and, you know, I also welcome the, the chance to talk to the town engineer, see if there's different ways of going about, you know, with swales and rain garden as opposed to drain, you know, more expensive.
Okay, now, when would they do, when would construction start on this?
Well, not until the ground thaws, so it wouldn't be until the spring.
Okay, so if we defer till the February meeting, our February meeting?
It's gonna be fine.
Yes.
Yeah, and that would give us the chance to, to answer the questions that you've proposed.
Okay, can we have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Well, I've moved that we can continue the public hearing until our February meeting.
Second?
February what, the third or something?
I didn't have a calendar.
The first or is it the first or the?
The first.
The first, okay. February 1st, and who seconded?
That would be me, Melissa.
Melissa, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Most, any abstain? Okay. Six, nothing.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, next order of business is the land trust, but we're not going to consider that tonight. So application 20-14 of Robert Belikboshin.
Perfect.
Okay. I believe, Mike, that there were, oh, Mike went over? I believe, Mike, that there were, oh, Mike went over to the left. You swept with Bruce and then lost you. Um, so, go ahead.
So after our last meeting, Rob uh sent in two revised drawings. One we received this afternoon. Um, and this was discussed earlier this evening with the design review board. They granted a favorable recommendation. Um, I will share with you now the revised plans. Um, because his plans now reflect the changes to the facade. And Rob, you can explain maybe a little bit what we're doing. There we go. So this view right now is looking from Iron Horse Boulevard to the west of the building. You can see uh artifacts is kind of matching the color scheme. Um, Rob, do you want to talk about the windows, louvers, and the treatment for the base?
Uh, yes, the basis is still the aluminum. Um, it's a heavy aluminum. It can be colored, any color that we choose. It could be marble, wood grain, um granite. I believe this is a granite. They can lighten or darken uh based on what we need to do to meld with the building perfectly. Um, each panel is independent, uh other than the base. And the frames are aluminum around the windows. Uh, the windows can all come out, so we can pop all the windows out at any one point to make it just a full open air patio. Um, and then on top are are black aluminum louvers, so we can also vent the entire patio um through the louvers as well. Uh, so there'll be a opening and closing um component to the louvers on the inside.
That provides for the air circulation and ventilation?
Yes.
So by ventilation, you're referring to some sort of HVAC?
No.
Mechanical system?
Just uh.
Fresh air?
Yeah, fresh air, just fresh air. I'll, you know, try to maintain uh somewhat outdoor feel for the patio. I think, again, minus all the windows, on any good day, it'll take us about 10 minutes to remove the 20 windows. Um, and stack them up. It'll give you an outdoor feel for the patio.
How how many of the, there's like three bays there, right? So you're only using the the two to the north? There's still be one that has a loading dock or something in it that you're you're, that you're not involved with, right?
Um, are you including the dumpster area?
Um, no, I I, it's the furthest south. There's a a bay that's further south that seems to have another front that's, you know, a store front that's empty.
That would be the trash area?
The which area?
The trash area.
A trash area, okay. Okay. Um, I don't remember there being a dumpster in there, but okay.
Um.
But you're not using it as, that's not going to be restaurant space?
No.
So am I correct in thinking that the exterior um with the windows and the louvers is going to be flush with where the current concrete barricades are?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be probably about about 12 inches um under the the current ceiling.
Overhang, okay.
And what did design review say for colors on the on the the base?
They liked this scheme that you're seeing right now as presented. Um, there was a question, you're, you have the previous plans in in your in your folder. It looked like there was a, the pan, the paneling was painted like a wood, a faux wood sort of finish. Um, however, the the commission liked that this was matching sort of the grays and whites that will be on the building when they renovate, do the renovation. I'll just scale up. Um, because you have a, just a, a small shot of of the color scheme, what it'll look like when this whole building's repainted.
So the brick is getting repainted apart as part of the renovation?
Yep.
Okay.
It'll be white.
Nice.
Lot of white, lot of white, black, and grays.
Okay.
Will this be done before the renovation of the whole Andy's Plaza or same time, or what's the timing of the two?
So my last discussion with Andy Junior was he was planning on doing this, the facade renovation this coming spring. So this, these two projects may be going simultaneously.
If I may, um, I remember reading the application and the statement that there hasn't been a problem with parking in missing the parking that you're currently using as the expanded patio. Um, how has your parking lot use been expanded or diminished because of COVID? Not a lot of people are eating in. Do you, do you envision a problem with needing more parking spaces? I mean, when it gets busy over there, you guys, you guys need more parking as it is. What are the, what are the plans for that?
Well, um, we're gonna make use of the adjacent parking area across the street.
At the playground area?
Yes. We're currently using the upstairs area for employees. Um, eventually, that will be, that will be leased eventually. Um, and when it happens, we'll migrate across the street for employees to kind of vacate, you know, the 12, 13 spaces there. And when we go into overflow mode, if we get to overflow mode, we can still, you know, get the regular customers on board with parking across the street.
So what happens when, you know, I've enjoyed many, many um uh meal on your patio while SPAC is going across the street. So what happens when SPAC is going across the street and parking is is difficult anyhow?
We'll get to work really early that day because of parking space.
Okay.
Yeah, and then and then we'll just manage like, like everybody else manages downtown Simmsbury when events are going on. Um, you know, it's more of an anomaly night than than a regular. Um, so, you know, we we, you know, we have to fend off that, our parking area when any event goes on. And by the time we start to try and steer people the other way, we usually have 12, 15 parking, you know, cars parked there already. And it's just what we deal with, you know. Uh, you can say no parking all day long, and and people will find a reason to be able to park there, so. Um, we we haven't had any problems. And we know it when it's busy and people are parking, we're going to get the residual across the street, and that typically happens.
Because you also have the the, um, is it a gym or something that's going in there?
Yes, they, yeah, they have a boot camp that that started up.
All right, have they started? Okay, they would be at reduced capacity right now anyhow, so we don't know what their use will be.
Um, I'm seeing cars there early. When I'm coming in, there are cars there, so that's, that's a good sign if people are working out early. I I don't know how many people are working out during happy hour, but um they're certainly welcome to come over, put up with a car.
Um, maybe when he does his parking lot stuff, the road going out to Phelps Lane actually has parking along it, it's supposed to?
Yes.
Um, but, you know, the the marking has worn off and it might pay to actually get that remarked so that you have parking on your side of the street that you would be able to use a little better.
Yeah, certainly for the overflow, if if people uh, you may use that parking. And and they do, when it's supposed to get busier, the cars start to park down that way.
Yeah, no, it'd just be better for your employees than parking in the playground area. But then you, then you're offsetting the playground parents.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah, we, yeah, we can look at doing that first.
Okay, anybody have any other comments on it?
Well, I guess, is it going to look like a, I don't know, an aluminum door? Is that what this texture will actually look like?
Um, say that again?
Is it really like an aluminum door? Is that what these are really are, you know, when they're where you're taking the window out? Um, but the base is going to be, you know, like the base of an aluminum door?
No, 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 no. The the base is about six inches wide. Um, that whole structure will probably weigh about 3,000, 4,000 pounds. It's it's uh over quarter-inch aluminum. Uh, so the weight will will add up. It's it's a very firm structured basis. The door itself's a real door. We're not taking, we're not taking the glass out of the doors at any one point. That's, that's a fixed structure. But all the windows themselves will come out. Um, and there are no doors on the south facing walls. So when those four or five panels come out, it's it's complete open air, but the doors will always be there. You can't take, we're not going to be able to take the glass out of the doors.
And then, so the divide that goes back to the building, right, you're you're out at the the edge, and then you'll, then you'll have, you know, the space between the edge and the real building. Um, you're going to be using the same wall that will go along there?
Uh, yes, if 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 we can put the original picture up, there are um renditions of the two side panels. Um, left and the right. One, one is a four-panel unit, and the other is a five, a five-panel unit.
Okay, but it's the same, same material and everything. It's just the number.
Yeah, all all around. If you scroll all the way down, there's, there's the other two pieces.
Okay. And then just use, the use will be, how many season is it? Can you use it in the middle of winter? Because there's no heat out there, right?
Uh, probably not. We are, we are going to bring um uh gas heaters in, vented, so kind of like a garage heater to be able to heat the units. Um, so probably, it might be 10, 10 months out of the year. It won't be ideal, but um, and I'd imagine November, uh, late November, December, January, February, maybe not so much.
And the fire marshal is okay with with whatever heating you're gonna use in there and and just the limited, the two limited doors? Because usually with, you know, if it's a propane type heater or something, they're very concerned.
It's it's not a, no, it's not a propane heater, it's natural gas.
It burns.
Okay. And then how, then how does that vent?
Uh, it'll vent, it'll vents, it'll vent out. So it will be a vented uh unit.
Okay, so it goes through this, these, this wall that we're seeing here somewhere?
Yes.
Does it go through the top part? It looked like there were vents on the, above the windows?
No, it'll, it'll come up, it'll come up above that.
You've already.
The left or to the right?
So to Kevin's point, you've already passed this through the fire marshal?
Yes, I I I, the four-wheel plan hasn't gone before the fire marshal. He saw that, he saw the initial plans. And he was in agreement that, you know, whatever we did was vented, it it would be fine.
Right, no, but to the, specifically to the heating, has he looked at that?
I'm sorry?
Specifically to the heating units that you're going to use, have they looked at that?
He didn't look at the actual specific heating unit, but we spoke about heating it that way.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I'm assuming that they'll take care of that?
Yeah, as long as it's vented, we're good.
Conceptually, um, I'm not as visual as some other people. I want to go back to the idea of what this looks like when the glass comes out. So there's, there are frames and the actual glass comes out? Or the doors just, the door, it's not like the doors get opened like this. It's that the panels come out and then they're reinserted at the end of the night or something?
Yes, the the window panel is kind of um similar to your screen door, that you can pop the glass off and put the screen in.
Mm-hmm. So it's not like they're sliding open or anything like that?
No, there's nothing mechanical on these, on these at all. We we actually, we looked into that, and then we did away with that.
Okay.
So the the individual pieces that they're, they're heavy duty, they'll come out and they'll go back in. The doors are fixed. The doors, the the glass and the doors will not come out.
The glass comes out, though.
Not on the door.
Not on the doors.
Oh, well, just, let me, let me see if I can get a little clearer myself. There's nine panels in this depiction between the two doors. Those nine panels, the windows are removable, but the the panels will stay there 12 months a year. It's just the windows are going to be taken out every day for as many months as possible, and they're going to be put back in at the end of every day. Windows in, windows out every day?
Yes.
Well, you want to do.
These that, these that we decide that we should open up the patio. If it's pouring out and it's 45 degrees, we're not popping the windows out. If it's 55 degrees and, you know, we, you know, we'll, we'll make that decision.
Okay, and the the louvers that we see here are part of a large panel. They're the upper, you know, 20% of that panel, it appears. But somewhere above that, there will be discharge, um, some sort of mechanical discharge for the gas or the fumes or the whatever from the fuel of the, isn't that what you said?
Yeah, certainly. Out the louvers, but out the, the um.
On the two ends, not on the, on the east side?
No, I'm I'm on the south or the north panels, above the louvers.
Okay.
Is is where the the venting will occur.
So what is that material above the louver?
I'm sorry?
What is the material above the louver? You have, and is the louver going to be brown or is it going to be white? What color is that going to be?
The the louvers currently are are black, they're aluminum, and they're painted black, like you, like you see in the picture.
Well, it looks brown to us.
Yeah.
Charcoal.
Charcoal, dark, dark, yeah, dark charcoal.
And that isn't the same scheme as the rest of the plaza is being redone in?
Yes.
Okay, and then the white area above that, before you get to the concrete area, is what material?
That's currently, it's stucco, and they'll be painting the stucco. If you look where you see.
Oh, yeah.
On top, it's tan, and then it turns into like a, like a concrete. We're also, the stucco area is where we'll be venting.
Through the stucco, okay. And that hangs down from the ceiling?
Uh, no, no, it it's up in, it's up in the ceiling, so it would vent up and then out.
Oh, okay.
Will there be any, any conformity to the lot that you're not using there, to the section, or is it going to continue to look the way that it looks now?
Uh, the additional four spaces to the left of us.
Mm-hmm.
It, well, the building's going to be painted, and then there'll be four parking spaces there.
Okay. Where are we? Any more questions? Mike, do you have any comments?
No, just, just one, one thing. Uh, Kevin, at the last meeting, it's, we're looking for a little more uh in-depth analysis of the parking requirements. I know we kind of discussed the the public parking that's available within 500 feet of the site. Just from a a regulation perspective, we, we have a reduction of eight parking spaces, meaning there's four you're losing to the expanded patio, and four that are required for the expanded patio. Um, however, like I said, there's, there's, there's public parking within 500 feet of the use that can support this expansion of eight spaces. Um, along with, as you kind of noted, the original uh site plan from dated, I believe it's 1991, revised in 96. It, what the driveway to Phelps Lane is actually referred to as Andy's, Andy's Way. And it's supposed to have parking on there. So you're right, that those, those parking spaces along Andy's Way should be restripped, which will alleviate any requirements.
That'd be a good idea, even in the present configuration.
When we, in the center zone, when we do the 500 feet, that's from the property line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
He owns Andy's Way, so it gets him to Phelps.
Yeah, no, so that would count the iron horse behind um Plan B even, that parking lot.
Yeah, that's exactly where I was referring to, the state, the commuter lots there.
Yeah, no, versus the 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 smack property, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have any um recommended motion, Mike?
I just have a motion attached to my my staff report, just requiring that administrative zoning permit is is uh replied for, for the uh construction. Otherwise, we've addressed everything with the revised plans.
Okay, are we ready to make a motion? Okay, are we ready to make a motion?
So let me just, again, what we're trying to do is take a motion theoretically in affirmative to approve the application 2014 as it's stated in the minutes, I mean, in the call to today's meeting. And then at the end of that, we tack on an administrative zoning permit must be acquired before construction starts. Okay.
Which do we do first? Do we do the special exception or the...
We did the special exception.
Yeah, you approved the special exception at the last meeting.
Yeah, that's done. That was the last meeting. That was 2015. That was 2015.
Yeah, okay.
So if nobody has any further comment on what we're trying to deal with here, I'll make a motion that we approve the application 2014 by Robert...
May I interrupt Bruce and make one comment?
Sure.
The aesthetics of what we had shared with us by screen tonight is different than the color scheme that is, you know, the faux wood color scheme. Just want to make sure that we're approving one or the other, but that's not what's in the application, what we saw tonight.
And Mike, looking at your end, is the submission?
Yeah, I apologize. So that staff report had the plans that I received last Thursday. The plans that we showed on the screen are what we received today. We received it this afternoon, so...
Okay, and that is the application?
That's what you're approving tonight.
And that will end up in the Dropbox, correct?
We can see to it. Yes.
Okay, Bruce.
So we don't have to change the phrasing. The application 2014 that we're approving is associated with action on today, January 4th. But it's still application 2014. It's not version 14 or version, you know, 2A or whatever. It's just application 2014. And with the change to the Dropbox, now these documents don't stay in the Dropbox forever, Mike. I'm not sure how you committed to perpetuity.
If the commission was concerned, I would say you can add a second condition, that the approval for the renovation is pursuant to the plans prepared by Artifacts as presented to the commission on January 4th, 21.
I like that.
Is there a date on those plans, Mike?
I will tell you right now, I believe it said January 3rd. January 3rd, 2021 is the revision date.
So we'll refer to that as art of plans presented, plans drawn by Artifacts dated January 3rd, presented to the commission at this evening's meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, here we go again. The move approval of the application 2014 of Robert Bylikabashi, applicant 22, GC 2012 LLC owner, for a site plan modification to expand outdoor patio at the property located at 836 Hop Meadow Street, Zone SCZ. The approval is inclusive of the drawings done by Artifacts dated January 3rd, 2021, and presented to this commission this evening. And an administrative zoning permit is required before construction begins. End of motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Dave, what on the Dave?
I did Dave.
There he is.
Sorry, guys, my computer died.
Okay, well, we made the motion and we seconded it.
Wonderful. Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? None? Okay, it passes 6-0. Thank you. Okay, Mike, do you have some comments on the regulations updates for signs and things?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, maybe first could entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add a review of the Siting Council applications for Drake Hill and Woodland Street. I know the commission wanted to discuss that at the last meeting. I apologize, it was left off the agenda, but I prepared a staff kind of review of those two fuel cell applications.
Okay, can we have a motion to amend the agenda to consider the the Siting Council's work?
Yeah, so moved, whatever you said.
Do you have a second? Bruce, any discussion?
Aye. We're all rolled apart.
Opposed? Okay, it passes 6-0. Mike, you're on.
All right, so I'll start with that, and then we'll go into regs. So obviously, we know that this has been referred to us by the Siting Council. It's a proposal, it's actually three fuel cells are being proposed. One will be located on a vacant parcel owned by Dyno Nobel off Drake Hill. The other is near Building 100 off of Woodland Street, which is entirely within the existing facility. Maybe we'll take the Woodland Street location first, and then I'll go back to the Drake Hill one. The Woodland Street location is, it's really, it's only visible from the interior of the site, and I'm going to pull up the plans right now just real quick. I think from your standpoint, although technically, if the the fuel cell was within the jurisdiction of the zoning commission, we would consider an alternative energy device and would be subject to a special exception. However, if we're looking at our special exception criteria, which will be landscaping, traffic, and other sort of measurable impacts that this would have on the adjoining area, there's really limited impact that this thing will have to the adjoining properties. I'm putting up on the screen now kind of an aerial photograph kind of pointing to where this fuel cell will be. And as you can see on the right-hand corner, that's Hop Meadow Street, Woodland Street. And then right to the top is Work Way, which is 100 Grist Mill, which is zoned industrial. You just approved the dance studio going in there. This thing really will not be visible from the abutting properties. It shouldn't have any impact at all to the adjoining properties. Unlike the other application, but this is the is the installation for two fuel cells. There'll be two cabinets back to back. As for the Drake Hill location, let me just scroll up, and I apologize. I know we looked at this at the last meeting. So that area in red, that's kind of in the center of the screen there, that's where this fuel cell is being proposed. The fuel cells are a little cabinet. It's about seven feet tall, 28 feet long. And I don't know why my picture didn't load. Which, in this location, I'm just going to scroll all the way down, and I'm sorry for doing this. This picture here is looking from Drake Hill to the south into the site. As you can see, there's one maple that's kind of right along the driveway. This cabinet will be visible kind of right off the right edge of that tree as you're looking back towards the center of the site. You will see it from Drake Hill. The property is actually technically zoned, this swath right here is zoned industrial. To the right or to the left of that driveway is actually residential. It's R15. Still, like I said, if this was under our jurisdiction, this would be considered an alternative energy device, which is subject to a special exception. One of the things that I brought to the commission's attention with this is because it's a special exception, you have some findings that you have to make in your regs. And one of them is deals with landscaping, and I'm just going to read right from the report here. "The site of which the proposed use will be located will be suitably landscaped to protect the neighborhood. Adjacent properties and the proposed use of the subject property will not result in the loss of existing buffering between the subject site and adjacent single-family zone properties. When adequate buffering is found not to exist sufficient buffers between the proposed use and adjacent properties shall be provided." And this right here is a copy of the zoning map. It's really faint, you can see the property, it's kind of in the center of your screen. I don't know if you can see, there's my cursor. This is kind of where it's going to go approximately. It's, it has residentially zoned properties in the area, and like I said, will be visible from the public right of way.
Can you wiggle your cursor so we can see it? Thank you. Yep, thank you.
So, you know, in the Siting Council procedures, obviously, they act as the zoning commission, they really take away your locational approval for uses which are deemed to be either telecommunications or power generating facilities. However, pursuant to Docket 34, the applicants are required to inform the individuals or commissions that they otherwise would seek approval from. So that's why you have this referral to you. You have the ability to provide written comments to the commission if you feel it's necessary. And I just put a suggestion in there, because this was something that was discussed, is, you know, the visibility of proposed construction from the right-of-way and residentially zoned properties to the north and east should be discussed. Is this something you feel that the applicant, you know, if it was a perfect world, in front of you, would you be requiring adequate screening so you can't see this cabinet? And these things are, like I said, it's seven feet tall, it's it's either a monolithic, like gray or black-looking feature. And it's going to be 28 feet long, so it's big. And like I said, it will be visible.
What's the 28 feet? That's north to south or east to west?
North to south.
So that's not going to be a concern for Drake Hill Road?
Well, you know, you may get a glimpse of it from the abutting residentially zoned properties to the east. You have a house that's between them and the Betty Hudson property, the Drake Hill Landing, I think that's what we call it now. So there's a possibility this thing will be visible from abutting residentially zoned properties.
And definitely, when you come out of Iron Horse Road, that's basically what your picture is here, you'll be looking down straight at it.
Yes.
I would suggest that we at least ask them if they would put a little bit of landscaping to the north side of it.
It doesn't seem like an expensive endeavor in order to maintain, you know, the feel that we want.
Yeah.
Right.
I think the north and the east.
North and the east, yeah. Actually, I drove down there over the weekend, and I can't remember. I mean, the house to the left of the driveway is a little shielded from this, but I can't remember exactly. But they may have some issues about how much they can, how close they can come around with vegetation around it. I mean, we ran into that with all the other power stations.
I mean, I would recommend, and because you're in the position where it's this is being referred to under a Docket 34, is at least ask them to investigate this. Maybe put an importance on the view shed from Drake Hill down. And then, like you said, if eastern elevation is not feasible, I mean, at least bring it to their attention so that, like, someone will look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think that EV would be agreeable anyhow. I mean, they're a good neighbor, they're a good industrial citizen here.
Well, just remember, this isn't EV, this is Dino.
Yeah.
Same relationship, though.
Yeah, no, they're good. And I don't think you can, I mean, it's elevation is lower than the Ensign House. And it's kind of where their dumpsters are, kind of almost in relationship to their dumpsters from their site.
So there's an elevation difference?
Yeah, so you'd be looking over this.
And there's a retaining wall?
Right.
But not above ground. If you're looking down from Ensign, they have a stockade-type fence there of some sort.
They're going to have some roofing over there, you know, solar roofing at some point over there. Yeah.
They can't complain too much.
No. But the driveway that goes, the roadway that we see at the left edge of that photograph from Drake Hill down the left side of this area to be developed, is that their access to the fuel cells, or is it access from the factory side, you know, from the industrial side of this thing? What is that road for?
They'll be using that to access this fuel cell. They also have, there's another there's another structure that's further to the south, southeastern, it's kind of off the screen that they use.
Yeah.
You mean that the garages?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
On the right-hand side, used to be four, you know, Ensign Bigford houses that they tore down, and the garage is still at the end of this drive.
Well, sort of. My recollection of not, a couple of weeks ago going by there, those are in sorry condition, those garages there. Somewhat dilapidated, but they're there. That structure is there.
Yeah, that's why I surprised you, said they were using it, but...
They stored materials there, they had gravel and sand down there at one time. They were using it kind of as a storage yard.
Yeah.
And at the end of this, if you're not familiar, at the end of this driveway is a chain-link fence before you go into the industrial property.
So it's gated, or it's just fenced?
I think there's a gate there somewhere. Yeah, and I was wondering, will we not want to move that fence around this? Then I'm going to leave this fuel cell thing hanging out here.
Yeah, I think I mean, look at the plans, I think they're proposing they're proposing some sort of fencing around it. They have some, they have some either bollards or posts that are kind of lined along the north and east side, but there's no details on it.
Yeah.
It just shows all the utility connections.
Yeah, no, that'd be a pretty expensive piece of equipment to leave not protected by a fence.
But protecting from a fence wouldn't necessarily be the same thing you'd protect, use bollards to protect it from. The bollards might be to keep terrorists away or trucks. Yeah, we went by hit it with a truck, right, yeah.
But if they have a link-changing fence, they could put any kind of landscaping on the other side of it. On the outside. But yeah, we could just make that recommendation to them that they consider landscaping to protect the view from Drake Hill.
Do we have to suggest what we want, or just say, you know, would you guys get your designers to see if they could satisfy us?
The last time, the last time I hit a similar application was, the comment was just sent to them with a please consider landscape or modifying the landscaping plan, and the council required the applicant to contact the town directly to work out the details so that they could pass on the application. So my guess is they'll get our comments, and they'll say, whoa, could you please talk to the town? You two come to agreement, and we'll approve what's part of your agreement.
That was the solar farm that you're talking about?
No, no, I'm talking about a cell tower. The solar farm is a different animal because we went to court over that. That's part of a stipulated judgment. But what I was mentioning before was just a cell tower, that it was a modification to a cell tower, and as part of the modifications, the company had to add a shelter or like a little shed to put all their new toys inside. And they were proposing some landscaping, and they didn't really investigate the site fully. They wanted to put some evergreen trees in the middle of an area that was mapped as wetlands, which probably wouldn't live a very nice life. So suggested that they look at different vegetation for that area, just because the evergreens would not survive in a wet environment. So I I mean, I I will say, under docket forty four, you can you can influence the outcome. You may not be the 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 normal judge and jury on that, but. So I'll prepare something in writing and try to get it to them before the deadline, which is, I believe it's the middle of January, January fifteenth, I think they were looking for response.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Think that'll work.
So my other regulation update. Unfortunately, Bob DiCrescenzo did not submit his revision for tonight. We're hoping to have it for the next meeting in February. So we're we're to, if it's okay with the commission, delay talking about the sign regulations tonight. I brought up at the last meeting the concern with the industrial regs and uses and our limited uses. What I put in your packet is examples of other communities and their zone their industrial regs, which you could see there's there's a there's a varying degree of uses that are allowed in the industrial zones in these communities. Some of them have a larger menu than we do. The I I chose communities that were within five thousand either plus or minus of our population were similar sized and tried to find ones that the average income was similar. Just because I wanted some kind of way to say, here's a criteria that makes sense. Like, for example, you know, you have Windsor, Bloomfield, Farmington, Cheshire as as communities that I was looking at saying very similar communities. The only difference with with a few of them obviously is access to highways because that changes some of the uses when they're closer to highways. One thing that, you know, in talking in discussing with the chair earlier today, there was a a provision in it's in our regs, but there's also in Cheshire's where they give they give the commission a latitude to determine the uses that are appropriate or similar to uses that are currently allowed in their industrial red industrial zones. We have a similar clause, but the problem really is our is is we have so few uses that are allowed. One of the discussions that we eventually will will have to have is there are certain commercial uses such as retail. You know, Branford does an example where they have a scale that's allowed in industrial zones or what is not. That's specially permitted. I believe Branford allows up to three thousand square feet of retail by special permit in their industrial zones. We we should have that conversation whether you want to start seeing some of these uses such as retail to be added to this list. Everyone is I I don't want to say, you know, the classic everyone's doing it. But the the reality, like I said, I can't stress enough. We have two hundred thousand square feet of vacant office space right now in our industrial zone that's limited to be office space. I I I would like to 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 look at other opportunities for some of these property owners to fill that space. So so adding some uses which are appropriate in these in the I one and I two zoning districts.
And you said that you might be willing to look through those and point out some of the bring out some of the potentials. Now, I read through a lot of them and and some of it's pretty hard slogging.
Yeah.
Figure out what their structure is and how you how you could adapt it. It would be helpful if your expertise could be used here.
Well, I I I wasn't aware those were in the Dropbox until this afternoon. And there's, you know, the not count Simsbury, there's eighty pages. There's more than eighty pages of regs to read distributed over the towns in Ridgefield. I didn't see Ridgefield there. And I I noticed that the regs that are in there are for South Windsor and not Windsor. So you might want to do something about that. But I think that's a great idea, though. You know, that's a reasonable basis to extract some illustrations that would give us some direction on what to add. And I think it's a compelling case. We ought to do something and the sooner the better. I would give this some serious priority here.
Okay, so so what what I may do then is 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 for your next meeting, since since you're okay with the the kind of universe that I selected is then go what's what's the what's the common uses that are that are that are allowed? That's not in our regs between these communities. And then kind of if the commission's okay with it, we'll discuss it and then possibly get a text amendment ready to go.
Good.
Sounds like a plan.
Would you use the the chart like we did before and Chester uses?
Yes.
Well, can you and Laura kind of work on putting our current? What we allow into that form? Can you do that?
We'll do it.
You know, and then, you know, then we can look at, you know, and you can put any suggested ones there that you see. But but at least what we have into that format already. And then we can see where we go from there. Because otherwise we're starting from scratch. And so it'd be better to have what we already got because in in that format, it's entirely different format. And that worked, I think, well for what we did before. But the new regs, the rest of the new regs. Of course, we'd use our designations instead of theirs. Y P and whatever they have.
Right.
And then it just be consistent with what we've already done.
We could we could do that.
All right, thank you.
Um, I'll try to I'm going to try to get this to the commission. I know that our next meeting isn't until February first, but I'll shoot for Martin Luther King Day as my deadline, so two weeks from now to get this uploaded and I'll email the commission so that you have that two weeks prior to the next meeting.
Okay, that's good.
And jumping back momentarily on Bob DiCrescenzo. Are you was the plan to get us Bob DiCrescenzo's recommendations before we're sitting to chat with Bob DiCrescenzo about his record? Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, I want I want time for you to digest whatever revisions or drafts that he wants to that he's recommending so that we're not just acting on something.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Dave, can I offer a thought on the sign regulations? Because I may not be a seated member next time. When we're talking, I know we had a discussion last time I was a seated member that it was possible to make different rules for different types of signs or different sizes of signs, I should say, content neutral, of course, but different sizes of signs on different speed limit zones and that sort of thing. And I think that that'd be a really good idea for us to look at, especially is as the last political season just passed us, there was a real proliferation of huge, huge signs in in small residential zones. And it has a tendency to inflame unneighborly tendencies sometimes between people. And I think that that might be something we want to look at, not because it's a content based regulation, but because it's a sized race sized based regulation in terms of zones.
Melissa, thank you. We we will have a workshop to discuss the regulation and we will permit alternates to express their opinions.
Excellent.
So that's.
Do you want me?
You don't have to take advantage of your position now. Mike, you have anything else?
Yeah, well, no, I mean, maybe moving forward, any of these regulation discussions that are on the agenda, I will, we will put it as a workshop. So in fairness, the app the the alternates, they may show up at the meeting, they may not be seated, but if it's always a a workshop for this portion of the agenda, they can participate.
Great, thanks. That's a good idea.
Okay, well, we'll we'll do that moving forward specifically on the reg updates.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have one other monkey wrench that's emerging. In the current, I it was reported that the Connecticut General Assembly was going to consider zone changes to the zoning statutes, changes to zoning statutes to remedy the lack of affordable housing and diversity in Connecticut towns. One item that caught my attention is a proposal to eliminate community character as a consideration in zoning regs. There's a lot of misinformation being bandied about in the form of nonprofit reports and so on. And my question is, wouldn't it be a good idea for us in the zoning commission to present our regulation facts? And send that to our state reps and our community? And I would propose to ask Mike and maybe with with my help to draw up a list of those facts that about our regs and bring it back to the commission for discussion. And if we can form an opinion of, I'm sorry, or a form a document that we can then forward on. I think that might be a good thing to do. So I thought I'd bring that up for discussion tonight for a short while.
I have a question about that, Dave. What when you say that, what is the sort of the end goal in sharing our zoning regulations with, I'm assuming Representative Hampton is who whom you're referring to and the community?
And and Whitco.
Of course, of course, yeah.
We have, for example, we have affordable or we have provision for accessory dwelling units in all our residential areas. There are a lot of things that we've done that I see in the paper are evils that we should be cleansed of. And and I don't think that the facts that of what we have are clear to anybody. We have, as Mike has said, we have a as of right, multifamily zone in the Hartford area. I think our center zone regs have something quite different, providing for what might be multifamily zoning and so on. So a lot of these things are just they're not they're not being recognized. And I think that our state reps should know those things before they go into a discussion and read all of these other reports and opinions. It would be helpful for us to make ours known.
Dave, can can I recommend that after you put that list of facts together that maybe we have a workshop around this idea because? Okay, so, you know, for me, the goal would be to educate as to ways that Simsbury's zoning regulations currently already address some of the concerns that are being addressed, but also to take a real look at, you know, are there areas that we we need to make improvements? And maybe there aren't, but, you know, everything can always use an improvement, right?
Yeah, that that can be part of the discussion. I think I think we should address this because we might find things are being said or passed that would negatively impact us.
I think that's a tremendous idea and I totally what Melissa said, I would like to echo that. But I'm wondering if there's also an opportunity to get some public feedback on. I mean, I understand that we are elected to represent constituents, but I feel like that this has become such a topic of discussion in town that we can't afford to operate in a vacuum on it. And I I would like to hear what the what the public is thinking about it, what our constituents are thinking about what's on the agenda on the state level and how Simsbury plays a part in that. And maybe that's something that we do as a joint effort with Representative Hampton and Senator Whitco or however.
Let's do it one step at a time. When we get the facts in front of us and we agree on those facts, then what we do with it, maybe we send it to them. I think that would be a good idea, but we have to agree on that. And then how we communicate to the community? We could do that a number of ways and we could discuss that. I I have no objection to moving in that direction.
What you're suggesting.
Bruce, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What you're suggesting, Dave, though, is not to wrestle to the ground all the issues that might be existing in America about affordable housing. You're talking about trying to identify the salient points of our existing regulation so that John Hampton and others can be better informed as to what exactly our regulations provide for today. Now, that lends itself to, you know, comparison with what others might think that the regulations ought to do and and maybe don't. But I thought what you were saying is is identify the key points of what we have in place today and share that with.
That's the first step, I agree.
Right, okay. And then the rest comes in time, but if it gets all rolled into one big project, it isn't going to come, we're not going to be communicating it during this session, maybe the next session, but not the one coming up. But I I think I think I'm not sure if everybody's aware that Hampton is, you know, on this issue, he has it easy and that he only represents one town. And I think there's only one other legislator that has one town. All the others have multiple towns, but John's only got Simsbury. And he's lived here all his life, so this should be an an issue that.
Right, but our senator, our senator represents eleven different towns and there are going to be eleven different ideas of what the impact of this is. And I think that if we do get to the point where we're seeking public input, I think it's important that we reach all the constituencies within Simsbury who are concerned about this because, you know, time and again, advertisements we made and only a certain, you know, very passionate group will show up. And the other side just didn't show up. And it doesn't mean they don't care about it, maybe they didn't hear about it. But I think the public audience can sometimes be misleading in terms of what the entire population thinks. So we just need to kind of keep that in the back of our minds.
Right, that's why that should go downstream a little bit. And what are your comments?
I I like the direction that you're you're proposing. I think educating our leaders of what what we have and what we've done is really very important. They then know what they're talking about and can make better judgments.
Anybody else have a comment?
Oh, I was wondering if Mike could tell us how much input public hearing what the Planning Commission got when they were doing their affordable housing plan? Did people turn out for that or not? I mean, it is COVID time, so it's a little difficult, but.
So so the first meeting, we only have one speaker. We actually did two public meetings. The second meeting was, I would say, was well attended. I mean, Shannon, you were there, would you say about a dozen people?
Yeah, I think so. I think there was a pretty vocal, active bunch, I would say.
Yeah, so I mean, they they had they had a response. And also, I mean, that came, you know, that 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 was short notice. I mean, that was they were given a two week because we gave a extension because we, like I said, we did a second night because the first night was poorly attended. So you I mean, you could have a dozen or so or more people interested in this subject.
Okay, but remember what, first of all, we want to get the facts out there and and agree on those and agree among ourselves. The Planning Commission has the job of solving all the world's problems. And I think we could pass it on to them, too.
They made recommendations to us as to what we should do.
Right. So Dave, when you're. Know what we've done, too.
Dave's Dave's got the memorized.
Dave, when you're saying facts, you mean what our zoning regulations actually say or doesn't, correct? Okay.
As opposed to some other people's facts.
Right, where we stand on affordable housing.
No alternative fact. For this past, I don't know how many years. Okay. All right, that just gives us another thing to work on. And some more work for for Mike. Okay, well, I think we're getting to the point unless somebody's got some other new business.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'll second.
Let somebody else do it, you know.
Fourth.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.